Make an entrance. Okay, good evening. Time being 5:30pm. It's my pleasure to welcome you all to tonight's meeting on Monday the 3rd of March 2025. Welcome to a member of the community who's here with us this evening and also welcome to those who will be watching along at home on YouTube. Being 5:30pm, I now officially declare this meeting open. I wish to advise that council meetings are recorded and made publicly available on our website. Council meetings are also livestreamed on YouTube and in accordance with council's policy, I'll ask the CEO to confirm that the audio recording has started.
Yes.
Thank you. I wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, pay respects to elders past and present and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal community. Our attendees this evening are myself, councillor Rees, deputy mayor councillor Gladwrit, councillor Antoli, councillor Bain, councillor Cordova, councillor Dean, councillor Fox, councillor Midgley, councillor Richardson and councillor Street. From our staff this evening, we have the CEO, Mr Stewart, the acting director of engineering services, Mr Smee, the director of environment development and community services, Ms Shakuti, our communications lead, Ms Adams, our communications officer, Mr Heather and our executive assistant, Mrs Morton. We have no apologies this evening. We're on page one. I'm looking for a mover in a second of the minutes of the open session of council meeting number three held on the 17th of February 2025, being confirmed as a true record. I've got a mover in councillor Fox and a second in councillor Bain. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Motion is carried unanimously. Workshops held since the last council meeting. We had a workshop on the 24th of February in relation to Kimber waste services. Takes us two declarations of interest. Does any councillor have a declaration of interest? Councillor Fox.
I have an interest in the TASWaste South appointment of former rep, forum rep, file number 2422. Thank you.
Yep, the item on page 72. Thank you very much. Any further? Councillor Cordova?
So I don't think it's a conflict of interest, but I'm just declaring my role as the council's proxy on the special committee for copping sea cell with regard to that same item that councillor Fox was just talking about. So I'll be staying in their own for that.
Thank you very much. If there are no further ones, we move to transfer of agenda items. Is there any item on the agenda that a councillor would like to transfer from open into closed session or closed into open session? No, thank you. Takes us to questions without notice in the public. Does any member of the public wish to ask a question without notice? Thank you. Oh, apologies for that. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Donellen from Huntingfield. This week is Bike Week and I have a question I'm slightly embarrassed to ask, being a member of the Kimber Bicycle Advisory Committee. What has the council, has the council been doing anything in the way of initiatives or grants related to Bike Week this year?
Mr Stewart?
Thank you for the question. Through you, Mayor. I'm not aware of anything that we've been doing. I'll take that question on notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our director of engineering services has recently left us, so we don't have a permanent appointment to that area. He might have been able to provide some advice, so we'll take that one on notice. Thank you. Takes us to questions without notice. Oh, sorry, beg your pardon. Still on page two. Questions on notice from the public. There was one from Ms Angela Hanley with a response from Ms Shakuti in relation to LPS representations. If you do wish to submit a question on notice, you can do so by completing the relevant form on council's website or by emailing casey@kimbra.tas.garf.au. Takes us to page three. Questions without notice from councillors. Any councillor have a question without notice? No? Not councillor Midgley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few questions while out and about over the weekend. The first one relates to the North West Bay cemetery and a couple of years ago we passed that as a natural, part of that to be a natural burial site. Since we looked at that paper, I'm wondering, have we had any natural burials there?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor. I don't believe we have. We've had some inquiries and we did need to do some work around determining the exact area, but no, I don't believe we've actually had any burials as yet.
Thank you. Just in regards to that, if I could get a follow-up on that, that'd be great, but also in regards to the possible drainage work that needs to happen there, is, has that occurred? Is that at all in the budget plans? And any further information in regards to that?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor. I'll take that on notice and provide that with the response.
Thank you. And also, I did actually speak to a person who's really passionate about natural burials and they would be happy to work with council in regards to sort of gritting that area out and just doing further works around their expertise for natural burials. Have we at all got in touch with them in regards to proceeding that? And would we be interested perhaps in meeting them to find out more?
Mr Smee.
Question through you, Mayor is a bit cryptic when you say, have you got in contact with them?
Sorry, it's Beck. I didn't write their organisation down. We've had them talk at council and I forget their business name. Sorry, I didn't put my card there.
Through you, Mayor. I am aware that our staff have talked with that particular person before and yeah, happy to engage if any further expertise is required on the matter.
Thank you. And that was a question related to waste, my favourite topic. So while at the wonderful clean-up at Spring Farm, the Whitewater Creek track on Sunday, which attracted, I think, about 60 participants, which was also a bit sad to see how much rubbish was collected there. There's a group of passionate people who've set a landcare group in response to the platypus and other wildlife in the creek. And I'm wondering at all if we could consider placing some public waste bins at areas along the track to deter people perhaps putting rubbish in those areas. I don't know if we need to consider something like that in the budget or perhaps consider how we collect the rubbish from those placed bins, which I often know is difficult. And also dog poo bag bins as well. I don't know if we could consider something like that in the budget or have a think about a plan to deter people putting rubbish around the creek.
Through you, Mayor. The issue of course, as you've identified with placement of the bin is the easy bit, then it's an operational expense and we do like to place bins as strategically as possible. That's a matter that I can raise with our waste services coordinator and yes, it may well need to be a matter that's brought up as part of the budget.
Any further questions without notice from councillors? No, thank you very much. There was one question on notice and that was from councillor Midgley as well in relation to soft plastics with a response from Mr Reeve. At the, sorry, then we move to petitions still being actioned. There are no petitions still being actioned and at the time the agenda was compiled, no petitions had been received. We're now on page four. Officers' reports to council, purchasing policy with a recommendation on page five. I'm looking for a mover in a second please. I've got a mover in councillor Gladwrit and a second in councillor Bain. Councillor Gladwrit?
Thank you. We're considering the review of the purchasing policy. This was reviewed by three different parties, council officers in conjunction with the procurement subject matter experts from Elgat and supply chain management education Australia. So they have reviewed the policy for us. There were some minor amendments which were, have been suggested, including confirming that the policy and the code for tenders and contracts should be considered together and also improving general readability. So I think this is a sensible policy. I think the amendments are reasonable and I'm happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No, I'm going to put the recommend, oh sorry, councillor Antoli.
Thank you. The section, could I get a council officer's opinion about the section in the policy that talks about local purchasing, purchasing from local entities, which I'm assuming is intentionally a bit vague as to what is local, but there's no sort of comment around waiting. For example, thank you. That if all things are equal and for example, you have a local and an interstate one, we go with the local. There's no sort of metrics around that. Can I get an opinion one way or the other?
Through you, Mayor. Councillor Antoli, you are correct. It has been left open and that was the advice received in relation to the subject matter experts on this. They were saying that a local purchasing policy is quite problematic when you actually start to apply it. The definition of local, you can have a company, for example, that is based in Kimber but all of its employees live outside of Kimber and all of the products it uses are imported from outside of Kimber. So their advice was to steer clear of any waitings in relation to a local provision. They, they, and you will note in the following report that follows this, that there has been provision made within our tenders process to apply a waiting on a specific project, but it's not something that the advice we received was something that should be enshrined within as a waiting in every single situation.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I'm going to put...
Since the last council meeting, we had a workshop on the 24th of February in relation to Kingborough Waste Services. Takes us two declarations of interest. Does any councillor have a declaration of interest? Councillor Fox.
I have an interest in the TAS Waste South appointment of former rep, forum rep, file number 2422. Thank you.
Yep, the item on page 72. Thank you very much. Any further? Councillor Cordova.
So I don't think it's a conflict of interest, but I'm just declaring my role as the council's proxy on the special committee for copping C cell with regard to that same item that councillor Fox was just talking about. So I'll be staying in their room for that.
Thank you very much. If there are no further ones, we move to transfer of agenda items. Is there any item on the agenda that a councillor would like to transfer from open into closed session or closed into open session? No, thank you. Takes us to questions without notice in the public. Does any member of the public wish to ask a question without notice? Thank you. Apologies for that. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Donnellan from Huntingfield. This week is Bike Week and I have a question I'm slightly embarrassed to ask, being a member of the Kingborough Bicycle Advisory Committee. What has the council, has the council been doing anything in the way of initiatives or grants related to Bike Week this year?
Mr Stewart.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Mayor. I'm not aware of anything that we've been doing. I'll take that question on notice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our Director of Engineering Services has recently left us, so we don't have a permanent appointment to that area. He might have been able to provide some advice, so we'll take that one on notice. Thank you. Takes us to questions without notice. Oh, sorry, beg your pardon, still on page two, questions on notice from the public. There was one from Ms Angela Hanley with a response from Ms Shakuti in relation to LPS representations. If you do wish to submit a question on notice, you can do so by completing the relevant form on council's website or by emailing casey@kingborough.tas.garf.au. Takes us to page three, questions without notice from councillors. Any councillor have a question without notice? No? Not councillor Midgley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few questions while out and about over the weekend. The first one relates to the North West Bay Cemetery and a couple of years ago we passed that as a natural, part of that to be a natural burial site. Since we looked at that paper, I'm wondering, have we had any natural burials there?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor. I don't believe we have. We've had some inquiries and we did need to do some work around determining the exact area, but no, I don't believe we've actually had any burials as yet.
Thank you. Just in regards to that, if I could get a follow up on that, that'd be great, but also in regards to the possible drainage work that needs to happen there, is, has that occurred? Is that at all in the budget plans? And any further information in regards to that?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor. I'll take that on notice and provide that with the response.
Thank you. And also, I did actually speak to a person who's really passionate about natural burials and they would be happy to work with council in regards to sort of gritting that area out and just doing further works around their expertise for natural burials. Have we at all got in touch with them in regards to proceeding that? And would we be interested perhaps in meeting them to find out more?
Mr Smee.
Question through you, Mayor, is a bit cryptic when you say, have you got in contact with them?
Sorry, it's Beck. I didn't write their organisation down. We've had them talk at council and I forget their business name. Sorry, I didn't put my card there.
Through you, Mayor. I am aware that our staff have talked with that particular person before and yeah, happy to engage if any further expertise is required on the matter.
Thank you. Another question related to waste, my favourite topic. So while at the wonderful clean up at Spring Farm, the Whitewater Creek Track on Sunday, which attracted, I think, about 60 participants, which was also a bit sad to see how much rubbish was collected there. There's a group of passionate people who started a landcare group in response to the platypus and other wildlife in the creek. And I'm wondering at all if we could consider placing some public waste bins at areas along the track to deter people perhaps putting rubbish in those areas. I don't know if we need to consider something like that in the budget or perhaps consider how we collect the rubbish from those placed bins, which I often know is difficult, and also dog poo bag bins as well. I don't know if we could consider something like that in the budget or have a think about a plan to deter people putting rubbish around the creek.
Through you, Mayor. The issue of course, as you've identified with placement of the bin is the easy bit. Then it's an operational expense and we do like to place bins as strategically as possible. That's a matter that I can raise with our Waste Services Coordinator and yes, it may well need to be a matter that's brought up as part of the budget.
Any further questions without notice from councillors? No, thank you very much. There was one question on notice and that was from councillor Midgley as well in relation to soft plastics with a response from Mr Reeve. At the, sorry, then we move to petitions still being actioned. There are no petitions still being actioned. And at the time the agenda was compiled, no petitions had been received. We're now on page four, Officers' Reports to Council, Purchasing Policy with a recommendation on page five. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder please. I've got a mover in councillor Gladright and a seconder in councillor Bain. Councillor Gladright.
Thank you. We're considering the review of the purchasing policy. This was reviewed by three different parties, council officers in conjunction with the procurement subject matter experts from Elgat and Supply Chain Management Education Australia. So they have reviewed the policy for us. There were some minor amendments which were, have been suggested, including confirming that the policy and the code for tenders and contracts should be considered together and also improving general readability. So I think this is a sensible policy. I think the amendments are reasonable and I'm happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No, I'm going to put the recommend, oh, sorry, councillor Entoli.
Thank you. The section, could I get a council officer's opinion about the section in the policy that talks about local purchasing, purchasing from local entities, which I'm assuming is intentionally a bit vague as to what is local, but there's no sort of comment around weighting. For example, thank you, that if all things are equal and for example, you have a local and an interstate one, we go with the local, there's no sort of metrics around that? Can I get an opinion, one way or the other?
Through you, Mayor. Councillor Entoli, you are correct. It has been left open and that was the advice received in relation to the subject matter experts on this. They were saying that a local purchasing policy is quite problematic when you actually start to apply it. The definition of local, you can have a company, for example, that is based in Kingborough, but all of its employees live outside of Kingborough and all of the products it use are imported from outside of Kingborough. So their advice was to steer clear of any weightings in relation to a local provision. They, they, and you will note in the following, the report that follows this, that there has been provision made within our tenders process to apply a weighting on a specific project, but it's not something that, the advice we received was something that should be enshrined within as a weighting in every single situation.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I'm going to put the recommendation moved by councillor Gladright and seconded by councillor Bain. All those in favour?
No.
Against? Motion is carried. Takes us to page 17, Code for Tenders and Contracts Policy with a recommendation on page 19. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder please. I've got a mover, councillor Cordova, seconded councillor Fox. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're looking here at the Code for Tenders and Contracts Policy and essentially there are a number of changes that we can go through, but I wanted to highlight a few areas within the policy that I thought were worthy of contemplation and were, were good, were good to have. So some of those include, I noted the, the kind of fundamental principles here around sustainable procurement practices, which I thought were very reasonable and I was pleased to see them in there. So that's fundamentally things like only buy what is necessary, reduce waste through avoiding, reducing, reusing and recycling strategies, prioritise energy and water saving products, I thought that was a really good addition, avoid polluting toxic or hazardous goods and choose products that reduce greenhouse gas emissions and support biodiversity and fundamentally ensure long-term value for money. So these were something, these were kind of the elements that I pulled out of what is a really comprehensive and long policy and I'm sure my colleagues will, will unpack it further, but to, to take us through a kind of whirlwind tour of it, we're talking about general procurement rules, things around no undue influence, don't bias the proceedings, have a fair and transparent process, the sustainable procurement aspects of it, which I just talked about, which I think are really encouraging, really good. And I think it speaks to our, I guess, leadership as a councillor and our, our priorities and values. So I thought those were really good. The conflict of interest and avoidance of collusion, that's a really interesting area and I'd be certainly willing to unpack that because I do have a few questions for staff on really how, the enforceability of some of this stuff, but I'll get to that momentarily. The tendering rules and the various exemptions and then the tender process as well as the tender review committee, it kind of, the, the report essentially unpacks all of those things. So there's a lot of key points in the document, but I really did, I guess, want to zoom in just briefly, if I may, through you, Mayor. A question around, what are the, what are the mechanisms? When we actually implement this policy at council and historically when we have implemented it, how do we actually enforce those measures around making sure that businesses aren't colluding? Or there's one provision in here that talks about if, if companies put forward tender bids that are unreasonable and the example there, if you read between the lines, it's basically saying, when somebody puts forward, when somebody puts forward a tender that is way, way, way too high, that's, that's against our policy. So what do we actually do around that? Do we, do we enforce that? Do we have any way of enforcing the things around making sure that businesses out in the community aren't getting together and colluding and things like that? How do we actually enforce it?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor. Difficult to enforce, difficult to prove, but if we have any suspicion that it's occurring, we would declare the tender price, the tenderers non-conforming and that, that would send a message in relation to our stance on, on that particular matter. But very difficult to actually enforce because you first got to be able to prove it and you'd want to be on pretty sure ground in relation to making an accusation of that nature. But we do have, we do have the provision to declare a particular tender non-conforming and we, we would do that if we suspected that that practice had occurred.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor, I, I think that, that answer is kind of what, what I suspected. I just wanted to highlight also the multiple, the multiple use register and that section of the policy and the prescribed limits. That's something I didn't mention in our kind of whirlwind tour about the amounts of money that we're talking about, works that fall below the prescribed limit of $250,000. That's with the multiple use register, but we're talking about typically those larger sums of money above 250, they will come to council, is my understanding. I just wanted to, yeah, so with regard to my question just before, that was with relation to 6.1.9 and 6.1.10 around the general principles that all parties involved in tenders to which this code applies must refrain from all improper practices, including collusive tendering and not undertake canvassing of councillors or council employees in relation to a tender. So I'll leave it there because it's really a very comprehensive and in-depth policy. There's a lot of specificity in there, which I think is a good thing and I commend the author and the authorizer and the whole team for working on this and really paying close attention to detail for what is a really critical policy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Entoli and then councillor Richardson.
Thank you, Mayor. I likewise think it's a very thorough review of the policy, especially around exemptions. And I know that we talk a little bit about that in the next item as well, 15.2, Codes for Tenders. But I have a question around Regulation 27, which gives quite a lengthy list of exemptions. And then the CEO seems to have broad discretion to decide exemptions outside of Regulation 27. Can I have an opinion on whether or not we're allowed to do that? How, how much, how much broad discretion does the CEO have to look at an exemption not mentioned in the exemptions list for Regulation 27? Is that permissible, permissible?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor. Under the Act, council tenders over the prescribed limit of 250,000 have to come to council. Now, so, so basically anything under that is subject to our policy and is subject to whatever terms and conditions council wish to approve as part of that policy. So, so in really simple terms, if council is, is happy for the CEO to have exemptions within its policy, that is a matter for council. The Act only requires tenders over that prescribed limit to be brought to the council chamber.
And thank you, if I may, Mayor. Are there examples of exemptions above that amount? There are, there's a whole list, like emergencies, et cetera. Are there, are there examples of exemptions where the CEO has the right to exempt something for going to tender that's above the listed reasons, based on your experience and knowledge? Or do you, have you found that that, those, that exemption list is pretty much all encompassing?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor. In my experience, I've not had an example where the, a CEO or a general manager has, has exercised an exemption above that limit for any reason. It would need to be an extreme emergency situation and even then there's provision to call a special meaning of council if required. So I mean, I don't want to answer for the CEO, but I would, I would find it extremely unforeseen for a situation in which a CEO is issuing an exemption from going to tender above the prescribed limit.
Councillor Entoli.
Yeah, thank you. Probably more, I should have clarified it, not the prescribed limit, but the prescribed reasons. So there's a list of reasons, there is a list of exemptions. Does he or she have discretion to choose a reason not listed there? I mean, how aligned to the regulation do they have to be to choose an exemption? Or have you found that, that, that list, I think it's about six or seven, is so all encompassing, it just doesn't seem to happen?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor. I, I would say in my experience, it, it's actually quite rare that exemptions are given. It, it's not, it's not the best practice to be issuing exemptions, but there certainly are situations in which there is a need. And once again, this is, this is a policy decision for council. We were not breaching any legislation if an exemption is given and I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with that, within the constraints of the policy, there is sufficient flexibility to be able to cover off on any given situation in which an exemption is, is required that's not specifically notated within the policy.
Thank you. That's all from me, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Thank you, councillor Entoli. Councillor Richardson.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask about the change in responsible officer from the CFO to the Director of Governance, Recreation and Property. What prompted that, that change?
Mr Smee.
Through you, Mayor. The, the reason for that relates to where the procurement function sits. It used to sit within the finance department. It now sits as a governance function. Having said that, we don't actually have a procurement specialist within the organisation at the moment. That was something we advertised three times for and, and failed to secure an applicant. It is a position that we have identified as being desirable, but that is the reason. It's where the function sits within the org structure.
Any further discussion? Councillor Cordova, did you want to close debate? Thank you. I'll put the recommendation then moved by councillor Cordova and seconded by councillor Fox. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. Takes us to page 59, Kingborough Positive Aging Policy with a recommendation on page 60. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder please. Mover in councillor Midgley, seconder in councillor Cordova. Councillor Midgley.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we can see, we're updating our Kingborough Positive Aging Policy for anyone listening. Councils have policy, they have a timeframe and we look at them to update and we're looking further at another policy following this. My question around this one is, and I'm noting that policies provide that kind of framework to then go and look at the sort of strategy in this area, but do we, I know in staff review the policy and there's some great outcomes and really there hasn't been that much that has changed, but I guess over that time, like the change, things do happen in the community and things do kind of change. Do, why don't we sort of go to any sort of community questions, consultation, maybe the access and advisory committee just to kind of check? I guess that's my first question. And the other question around that kind of theme is, a couple of policies ago, we looked at an overarching kind of community inclusion type policy as a framework for then some of these things to sit under. And I'm wondering, you know, thinking as well around staff time, having all these policies, all these different frameworks, wondering to the future if we can kind of look at all that perhaps with some cohorts that are missing. So there's a couple of questions in there. Thanks, Mayor.
Several. Ms Shakuti, good luck.
Through, through you, Mayor, and I will do my best to answer those questions. So if I miss something, please let me know. So the point is the overarching, you write the overarching document and council's position. We don't normally go to consultation on politi, policies, but we might or, and quite frequently do for developing the strategies that sit underneath. So that will be thought about for the strategy that sits underneath. To your question around a holistic sort of approach around community development, it's certainly in our thinking and where we would like to move to in terms of rationalising our policies and strategies and having an overarching, I suppose, policy and framework where the strategies would, would sit underneath. So as part of developing that type of framework, we'd be looking at, I suppose, what's best practice, particularly for other councils in Tasmania, look, doing a gap analysis around what we're currently covering well and what we might not be covering so well, reviewing all of our engagement to date, which we have a lot of, and some quite recent engagement as well that would be really useful. And then pending that review, we'd be looking at, does some further consultation and engagement, is that required? And then we'd be looking to develop sort of that overarching framework and associated, I suppose, strategies and documents. That will be a large project to embark on, so, and we're at the early stages of thinking about that.
Councillor Midgley.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And that's great to know, to get thinking and knowing the time that it takes to develop those concepts into practice, but for now we're passing the positive aging strategy and it looks sound to me. And we do, we do some excellent work in this space from our Community Services Programme and I know that people who this policy would be targeted to have definitely fed back to me that they're grateful for the variety of programmes that Kingborough offers and again, in our capacity and limited role that we can do in there. So I just want to thank all the staff for their hard work in that space.
Thanks, councillor Midgley. Councillor Fox.
Well firstly, I wanted to say that recently an elderly lady of the public mentioned that she felt there are a lot of, a lot of activities organised by council for young people, but she felt there weren't enough activities organised for older people. I'm just passing on that comment, but I'm looking here.
Can I just make comment on that? Because we actually do have quite a comprehensive programme for, for older members of the community. We have like guided walks through some of our bush reserves, we have the, arrange a different cafe, intergenerational cafes, some other cafe drop-in things. There's quite a comprehensive programme. Maybe it's perhaps the way that we're communicating those sessions might not be, it might be more electronic, maybe we need to focus on having posters up on some of, although I think we do have posters up on some of the notice boards, but it's, you know, like I'm fairly confident in the offerings that we do provide to older members of our community. So it's disappointing if she's not aware of, of those activities, but I guess if you could just pass on to keep an eye on the notice boards around, like at Channel Court or here, we do display those.
Thank you. I guess I'm looking at the guidelines in this policy and I wondered why they aren't exactly the same as the youth policy guidelines, which occur on page 67 and 68, because I feel that it's almost, there's a lot more guidelines for the, well, it's, it's section six in the aged policy and it's section five in the. Light subtleties between the two policies, but I would have thought that the, the youth policy procedures, for example, access, participation, consultation, social inclusion, building on diversity, equity, respect, communication, responsiveness, effectiveness, efficiency, building community capacity, confidentiality and accountability, there's a lot more there. And all of those would apply at the same time to the elderly people, for example, respectability, et cetera.
So I think you've got it round the other way. So they're currently in the positive aging policy, but not in the youth policy?
Uh.
No?
I, I think I read the youth policy ones out loud and not the aged ones. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in the aged and, yep, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 in the youth.
The CEO has found the answer.
Through, through you, Mayor. So there, there's elements of, of these that are reflected in, in both the, the policies. They're, they're done in slightly different places within the, the two different policies, which probably are a reflection of the time and, and when they were developed originally, but they, they do have quite similar context in the guidelines for the positive aging policy. It talks about communication, inclusion, building on community capacity, respect, equity, responsiveness, accountability, which touches on a number of those ones that you had mentioned within the youth policy. In the youth policy, they're listed in the area of procedure or policy detail rather than being in the guidelines. So it's a slightly different framing, but with a, with a relatively consistent subset of, of types of values, I guess, that are incorporated within them. But I do take your point around consistency of format and the fact that, you know, when they're being read side by side, we could, we could be laying them out in a similar way so that to the reader, they, they come through as a similar value sets that we're talking about in those two policies. in those two policies.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fox. Any further discussion? Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take this brief opportunity to zoom out a little bit and reflect on why it's so critical to have these policies. Specifically now speaking to the Positive Aging Policy, we are in an aging population and many members of our community, not to mention, you know, the ones who have moved in recently and also ones who have been here for many, many generations. Because of the aging demographics, we have to pay special mind to making sure that there's inclusion, that there's accessibility, that there's opportunities for reducing social isolation. And the reason why I reflect on that now more than ever is because as we're in a time of really rapidly increasing financial and wealth inequality, it means that some people really are being left behind. And I'm proud that this particular council is doing what it can to try and ameliorate the harm that that financial inequality is causing. And the way that we're doing that is by approving and maintaining and having programmes for elderly people to participate in. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that as financial inequality does get worse, there are many elderly people within our community who will not be able to avail themselves of the same opportunities that people with means do. Whether that's, you know, simple things, going for a coffee and hanging out with friends and paying money for transport. So that's why the council plays a crucial role in offering those programmes and services to make sure that no one's left behind and that everybody can maintain a dignified and well-supported existence within our community. So what I'm really proud of about this is the recognition of the importance of inclusion and community engagement and access to information. It's critical. And I think there's a lot that we can do to lean into areas around health and independence and housing support. And I think those are two critical areas, particularly as we have an aging population. As we plan budgets going forward, we do need to recognise that there's a lot of people that can't participate anymore in the way that they used to because of financial problems, you know, the cost of living crisis. And so whatever we can do to promote that inclusion and that, you know, offer support and help to people and to make people feel like they belong in our community and that they're a part of our community. So I'm really proud of our council having provisions like that. And I just wanted to kind of take that opportunity to zoom out a bit and reflect on that because I think it'll be of growing importance as time goes on. Thanks.
Thank you very much councillor Cordova. I reflect on the fact that I remember when we introduced or discussed this policy four years ago, that we, I asked the question, what is the age group that this is aimed at for Positive Aging Policies? And because you mentioned the elderly in there, and I was somewhat amused to hear that it's actually fifty plus. So there's some of us around this table who this policy applies to. So yes, thank you for that contribution. Any further? And stop looking so smug, young councillor Street. Very smug then. Councillor Midgley? Yep, councillor Midgley to sum up.
Well, I'm like a year and eight months away. Anyway, it's kind of scary. Can we move it up a bit, please? But no, I really thank other councils for their input. And I guess it really highlighted again that sort of, you know, look at overarching, like community inclusion for all. And I like that we've got that kind of thinking for the future because there are a couple of cohorts like missing, as I mentioned before, didn't specifically, but like, you know, children and our First Nations as well. So it's great, we're going to have that lens. But also that importance of why we have that as an aspiration for Kingborough in the work that we do. And just to note that sometimes we can't, not everyone can know about everything. That's just like the world of community. But don't forget, we have a role, we all have a role to play in regards to promoting kind of what we're doing out there.
Thank you councillor Midgley. I'm going to put the recommendation now, moved by councillor Midgley, seconded by councillor Cordova. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. Takes us to page sixty-four, Kingborough Youth Policy with a recommendation on page sixty-five. Looking for a mover and a seconder please? Move councillor Cordova, seconded councillor Midgley. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, it's really important that we have these policies. And the Kingborough Youth Policy contains a set of thirteen principles that I think well outline the, basically, the underpinning of the youth strategy that we had. And a copy of the endorsed policy with all the track changes is there available for people to see. But basically, we're talking about a commitment to youth engagement. We're talking about social inclusion and equity. And we're talking about respect and dignity and building community capacity. So I think the key point for me here is about, yeah, developing the people within our community so that they can have that autonomy to, yeah, build community capacity. So young people being invested in, and it really is an investment when we spend time and commit resources of staff and our finances in order to develop programmes that have a specific youth focus, that does pay dividends in terms of social cohesion, in terms of, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding around things like the social determinants of health and also the social determinants of, we hear a lot around this table actually over the few years that I've been here, around issues like vandalism or graffiti and things like that. And I think a lot of the time, there's a misunderstanding about young people and a misunderstanding around what those social determinants are. So that's why I think it's really good that we've got community development policies in place and the Youth Policy is one of those. And so, yeah, the more that we invest in this, we're actually investing in the long-term health of the community as a whole. So I really liked what councillor Midgley did describe around kind of thinking about this in terms of a comprehensive framework. And the reason is that when you take care of young people, for example, within your community, you're actually taking care of the future of your community. You are, you know, reducing issues of whether it's crime or whether it's disengagement or whether it's people feeling excluded or alienated. And so true for any other cohort or demographic, that when you build community capacity and really focus on, I guess, enhancing the livability of a community, what you're doing is you're actually investing in everyone at the same time. So all those things are connected. So I endorse the policy and I look forward to the contributions of others.
Thank you councillor Cordova. Further contributions? Councillor Antoli.
Thank you, Mayor. A few questions. Do we actually have like a youth engagement officer or a youth coordinator officer? Do we have that person on staff?
Yes, we do. Yep, we have a youth officer.
Fantastic. Having been involved in youth in this state for a decade at quite considerable, I just felt that the policy just lacked some measurable outcomes to support the actual policy itself. Let me just make, let me just find my notes here so that I can articulate it better. So we've got some great broad commitments. And I don't mean this as a criticism towards the people. I'm just trying to look at the policy to make it more meaningful for us so that we can actually measure whether or not the policy is being effective. Council is committed to the active engagement and participation of young people. There's nothing in there about how we will actually know that or determine that. Council ensure young people feel a sense of belonging and safety. There's nothing in there, no measurables, how we can find that out. Council contribute to the development of a community where the diversity of young people is accepted and valued. So there are a lot of aspirational statements without measurable goals and benchmarks to determine if they're being achieved. And I'm just wondering if we could maybe consider if it's council's will to maybe defer the acceptance of this policy to see some of these things put in there. An example would be, this is an example, council will organise at least three or four youth community events per year. Or council will implement an annual survey of all the young people through the high schools in Kingborough per annum. So that's just some thoughts that I have to share with the officer. I'd love to get some feedback. And also, there's no definition of what a young person is. Because in Tasmania, a young person is from the age of thirteen to twenty-five. The UN says it's fifteen to twenty-four, the federal government says it's twelve to twenty-five. So having some measurables in there as to who we're aiming the policy towards, I think is important. Because when we have a policy that's articulated with some outcomes, we can actually probably go for some federal funding as well. And this is a federal-funded jurisdiction, youth, as is aged care. So I just wanted to just ask some feedback from the officers on that and whether or not it might be worth deferring the decision on this for maybe looking at that improvement.
Ms. Shakuti.
Through you, Mayor. All very good questions. I suppose as referenced for the Aging Policy as well, this is the very high-level document and council's position. It's our sort of guiding principles on how we, that then flow down to our management of programming and, you know, our work in the youth space. So sitting underneath this will be a updated strategy. It may be brought to council prior to the, you know, our work on developing an overarching strategy or it may form part of that. That is, it is being worked on at the moment. That strategy is where those, a lot more detail will sit, measurable, you know, I suppose, performance indicators. And then depending where we get to with that strategy and what, you know, it tells us in terms of our review of reference material, our review of engagement etcetera, we may have an action plan that then sits under that, that we deliver. And they will be very defined actions that can be measurable as well.
Councillor Antoli.
Thank you. I'm satisfied with that answer because it shows that we're actually going to be drilling down. Obviously, you don't have a strategy under every policy, that's ridiculous. But for this one, you guys actually have that in place, is that right?
Ms. Shakuti.
Through you, Mayor. One has expired and we are working through developing another. Its exact format, we don't know yet, but we, it is part of this year's work plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any further contributions? Councillor Midgley.
Thank you, Mayor. My only little comment for this for the future perhaps is just around the Child and Youth Wellbeing Goals and a strategy sort of thing from the state government. And a lot of like people who work with children and young people organisations very much refer to the Youth Wellbeing Goals. So I guess that's a document that I definitely recommend, yeah, having a look at. And it covers pretty much what we have, but like really even more concise kind of language. And there's like six different domains. And that provides like a real foundation, kind of a focus of where other organisations are trying to kind of head, especially in regards to youth and children safeguarding kind of area as well. But thank you. And again, you know, we can't provide, yeah, we have to look at ourselves in local government around what our role is. And this kind of helps us define what our role is around young people. And we are limited in that capacity as well. But from things that I do see and people participate in, again, and with our limited resources that we have here, we don't have a youth space. We used to have a youth space, other councils have kind of a youth space. So it sort of sets our framework in regards to what we can and can't do. But this policy sets that framework. And I thank again the staff for the work that they do to elevate young people's voices, to enable participation and to be on the lookout for new kind of areas that are arising in our community as well that affect young people.
Thank you councillor Midgley. And I note that Ms. Shakuti did make note of the, that document that you referred to. Are there any further contributions? Councillor Cordova, did you want to sum up? So I'm going to put the recommendation, it's moved by councillor Cordova and seconded by councillor Midgley. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. Takes us to page seventy-two, Tas Way South Appointment of Forum Representative. We do have a recommendation on page seventy-three, but the recommendation is blank. So probably if somebody can move to discuss as a procedural motion. So I've got councillor Street moving that the matter be discussed and councillor Antoli is seconding that. All those in favour of that?
Aye.
Against? Motion is carried. Okay, open it up for discussion.
Can I? A question. So how, how many meetings are there? What's the kind of, what does this look like? And I note as well that this was a staff position. Like this is David Reeve's position, is that, sorry, this is, we're opening it up to the position that David Reeve was in, is that correct? And just the other questions I asked as well.
The CEO.
Through you, Mayor. So good questions. So yes, we did have a staff member in this representative for the Tas Way South. That's not necessarily consistent with what other councils do. I guess the, and the decision was not made in my time here, but I'd suggest it was made on the basis that David had a deep knowledge of the waste sector and was able to, I guess, represent council on the forum. I guess in terms of what the role of the forum is, it's basically representatives from the various local government organisations that make up the southern area. They then have their primary role as electing, I guess, the members on to the Tas Way South Board who are then responsible for making those decisions and determinations on behalf of the authority. So I guess it's the member representatives. So there are some council representatives that then form part of that board. They are elected from the representatives that each council put up. So it may be a pathway through into a board representation. This isn't for a board role, it's for the member representative from Kingborough Council who is then eligible to, A, vote on board roles and secondly, I guess, is eligible for receiving those roles as chief member rep or deputy member rep from the councils. Sorry, that was a confusing answer. I hope that helped.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Councillor Midgley.
Councillor Baines has pointed out they meet three times a year.
Okay. Do councillor Cordova?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I will just briefly discuss. So I've been the substitute representative, so I've worked closely with Mr. Reeve. Basically, the context is, as our CEO just outlined, the role here is to, fundamentally, it's to choose the board, the Tas Way South Board. And they're the ones who are responsible for delivering a lot of the grants, programmes related to things like the Container Refund Deposit Scheme and the Waste Levy and things like that. So Kingborough Council has, even though we get one vote, the weight of that vote is three, we essentially get three votes and we are one of the larger councils. And so briefly, from my perspective, having been to those meetings, it's essentially kind of three meetings a year. But what I think is critical around that is whoever, and I did speak to Mr. Reeve about this, but also it's just common knowledge that what's really important is that there's going to be an alignment with whoever is selected for the role, they just need to know what the strategic plan's all about, they need to know what the projects are that are coming up, they need to know about how we align council's interests with those, with that strategic plan and with those projects. So very briefly, I don't know, Mayor, is now the right time for me to kind of explain why I think I'd be the right candidate or would you like to?
Well, you can indicate that you wish to put your name forward and then I will ask if there's anybody else who would like to put their name forward. But before we get to that, we might just see if there's any other general questions. Councillor Street, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. So understanding what the CEO has said to us, is there a suitable staff member who, I suppose it's this difficult situation where I'm almost asking you, Mr. Stewart, to nominate somebody, but I don't quite know how else we go about that. Is there a suitable staff member in the offing who wants to do it? Because otherwise, and with greatest respect to councillor Cordova, I can see you getting bombarded with councillor nominations. And if nobody asks the question, you're not likely to say, well, there's a staff member. So I'm asking the question, is there a staff member?
Mr. Stewart.
Through you, Mayor. Look, I don't think there is a staff member. Certainly, we are in market at the moment for a replacement of the Director of Engineering Services. And I'm not going to nominate Daniel who's in the acting role. So, no, we don't have a staff member that I think would be appropriate to put up into this role currently. Our waste management context is through Kingborough Waste Services, which is a wholly owned company of council but a separate entity. I think it's appropriate that we have an elected member fill this role in this case.
What do other?
Most of them have elected representatives. Yep. We just made an exception with the former Director of Engineering Services because of his depth of knowledge in the waste area. So I guess we were the outliers in terms of who we put forward. Further discussion, questions? Any other nominations? Councillor Cordova has indicated his interest. Are there any other nominations? You might not have to put your case. I don't think we're going to need a ballot. Sorry?
Councillor Cordova does this one, then do we need another vote for his position?
Yes, we will.
So. I'll nominate for deputy then.
Okay, all right. Okay, so councillor Cordova would like to, you're not going to have to put your case, councillor Cordova, I think everyone's going, yay, I don't have to do it. So thank you very much for your interest.
I don't have to do it. So thank you very much for your interest. And councillor Midgley as the alternate appointment. So if everyone's happy with that and there's no further discussion, we will move out of discussion. So the recommendation then becomes that council endorses councillor Cordova as council's representative for the forum of Tasway South, and councillor Midgley as the alternate representative, and that these appointments are made immediately.
The official term, I think, through you, Mayor, sorry, is substitute representative. I think that's what it was last time, substitute.
Yeah, substitute representative instead of alternate. Thank you. So could I have a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved councillor Glade Wright, seconded councillor Bane. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Thank you to both of you for registering your interest for that and being council's representatives. If somebody could please let councillor Fox know that we've concluded that item so she can return. And divide and conquer. We are now on page 74, appendices, with a recommendation on page 74 as well. Does anyone have any questions in relation to the appendices? Councillor Antaly?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is regarding the LPS report, if I can just try and quickly find it. On page, well, I'm assuming it's on page 80 of the report, there's a comment there about public, what happens next in the blue box at the top. And there's a comment made in the second paragraph underneath, public hearings hosted before implementation. And the question I have is around this sentence, it is expected that the hearings will occur over a couple of weeks, with the dates and invitations managed by the TPC. Council officers will be in attendance in all those hearings. So the question's around two weeks. Where did we get two weeks from?
Ms Shaqoodi?
Through you, Mayor. I would go to say that is an error. And two weeks would be very ambitious to have the hearings completed. I would expect well over a month, if not a couple.
Yeah, thank you. I just note that for the Huon Valley council, it went for 47 weeks. And they only had 417 representations. And we are now at 820 maybe plus. So I thought that was maybe giving the community a very false sense of expectation. All right. So I'm wondering whether we should not even say that and say it could take several months maybe or multiple months, given the history there with only 417 representations. I mean, that's almost a year.
Ms Shaqoodi?
Through you, Mayor. We will, thank you for picking that up. And we will, obviously, we can't amend the agenda, but we will make sure any information, for example, on our website, does not say weeks and indicates, I suppose, a realistic timeframe for the hearings, which is potentially months.
Thank you. And rather than taking the glory, I do want to confess, it was an eagle eye member of the community that pointed that out to me and asked me to ask that question. But that's all the questions I have. And it was a really interesting report. And it's good to see those statistics very timely.
Thank you. Councillor Midgley?
Thank you. I also have a question about the hearings. And it was, I asked a question in relation to that at a council meeting a month or so ago, in regards to how we're going to inform the community to be prepared for that and whether the TPC would sort of send information to community members. Or perhaps we could let the community reps know because there's kind of a bit of people who've never ever done that before, they're a bit concerned about what to say, you know, all that kind of thing and how it looks. I'm just wondering if we had any follow-up on that, please.
Ms Shaqoodi?
Through you, Mayor. I don't have the exact process. I know it is led by the TPC. We are in regular conversation with the TPC and we will work with them when directed to make sure we do our part in letting those who have made representations know that the hearings are commencing and, you know, that they will be contacted about that. So I suppose we'll be waiting for directions from the TPC about that. But we'll certainly have comprehensive information on our website where we can.
Thank you. And I guess it was very basic information, through you, Mayor, sorry, another question and comment. I guess, basic information where if they've never been, it's like someone coming to a council meeting and seeing this kind of forum, like what that actually, just the really basic, what it looks like, like how much time they'll have, what they can say, what they should prepare. Because it can be quite nerve-wracking for people. I guess that's kind of more what community members have asked me for.
Ms Shaqoodi?
Through you, Mayor. I can certainly talk to staff about whether it's appropriate for council to provide some information regarding that. Or otherwise, it would be engaging with TPC to know or to find out if they have some information that can be provided to representatives prior to the process. I did just miss out before too. The TPC will be writing to all people who made a submission, inviting them to the hearing.
And I have a question regarding one of the active planning appeals, noting the 10 lot subdivision in Tinderbox. It's always difficult when we act as a planning authority and people advocating for a change in this space. And now we see that there's been a consent agreement to reduce the number of lots. What was the, what was the lot size reduced to? Sorry, that's just a random question. I'm sure you don't have it off the top of your head.
Thank you. Before I pass it on, just so you know, the TPC does have information on their website, that there's a whole section there on what happens on a hearing that gives people guidance. It gets quite detailed about, you know, when it's their turn to be heard and what they should do for preparation and all that sort of thing. So they should be guided by that resource. And that was for Ms Shaqoodi?
Yep. Through you, Mayor. I'll have to take that on notice.
Any further questions on the appendices? If not, I'll seek somebody to move that the appendices be received. A notice has moved councillor Glade Wright, seconded councillor Fox. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Notices of motion, there were no notices of motion. And it takes us to page 74, confirmation of minutes to be dealt with in closed session. In accordance with Regulation 15 of Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations 2015, council by absolute majority moved into closed session to consider the following items, confirmation of minutes and application for leave of absence. Looking for a mover and a seconder. I've got a mover in councillor Fox and a seconder in councillor Glade Wright. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. That brings us to the end of the open session of council. So to our member of the community who's with us this evening, thank you very much. And also to those people who have been watching along at home. In accordance with Kingborough council meetings audio recording guidelines policy, recording of the open session of the meeting will now cease. So good evening to you. Open session of council adjourned at 6:30pm.